Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have a full quorum present. It's nice to have a few people here tonight. We have a few items on our agenda that we'll need to take care of. We'll begin with an opening ceremony. Return to Councilmember Don Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then we go to our minutes of January 14th. A motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes of January 14th?
Second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have our public comment period. We have several people who have signed up to speak. And we simply remind you, if you didn't pick up one of the agendas, there are restrictions on the public speaking. Five minutes max. No more than 30 minutes total. One person, five minutes is the total they can speak. Most people don't take it, and that's okay. All comments are directed to the mayor. No personal comments to council members. It is not a debate or question-answer time. It's your time to speak your piece. The council may or may not respond depending on the circumstances afterwards, after everyone's had their say. With that then, we'll begin. Did I get that close?
Very close, thank you. Harun Atcha. I'll try to be more legible for next time. Thank you for having me. My name is Harun Atcha. I work as a data scientist at Salt Lake Community College, and I recently moved to West Valley City from out of state. I live in District 2, just a block from here. I'm here today to briefly talk about public transportation. I own a car, but every day I walk down to the bus terminal right outside of this building and take the Route 39 bus to the college. On the six or so stops between here and SLCC, there are five or six workers who get on, two or three students, and two or three other types of commuters hop on and off. Among my fellow commuter bus regulars are a few riders with developmental disabilities and a few with physical ones. Notably, when wheelchair-bound riders need to get off, the driver courteously and efficiently lowers the ramp, unhooks the wheelchair, and raises the ramp again without much ceremony or fuss. They're good at their jobs. There are few institutions in any community that are as egalitarian as the bus. Public transit doesn't just physically tie a city together. It ties its people together. When you take a light rail or the bus, you get a full sense of just who you are sharing your community with and who you owe a responsibility of courtesy and service to. Public transit allows people to live their lives with dignity, and when made accessible to all, builds communal ties. Here in the valley, public transit is important for more immediate reasons, too. We have had poor air quality days these past few days. Living in a valley means we don't have the luxury of hoping our emissions drift off somewhere else. Why am I bothering to tell you this? The proposal of free public transportation was brought up during the last mayoral race. While I am relatively new to Utah, I know one of the things that drew me here was the city's robust public transit system. I get a bus pass from the college, but even if I didn't, I'd be able to afford the fare. The same cannot be said of the many students who attend SLCC where I work. For their sake, for the sake of our civic ties, for the quality of our air, and for the dignity of our community, I'd like to ask the council to not let this initiative die with the campaign season. Free fare zones exist already in downtown Salt Lake City and in a few cities around the country, most recently, for example, in Kansas City, Missouri. I'd like to live in a city where taking public transit is an edifying experience, where it's reliable, accessible to our most vulnerable neighbors, and most importantly, free, to the extent possible. Please, I would urge the council to explore options for making public transit free in West Valley City or moving towards that option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Doyle Griffith.
Good afternoon. I am here at the request of my daughter, her concerned parents, and she was asking me to review the things about my experiences with the code department, and I'll be as brief as I can, but there's a time element there that we need to concern ourselves with. But first of all, she says that the city is to be commended about wanting a beautiful country, a beautiful city, but the way that they go around it is a little suspect. And so, I think the neighborhood, we want neighborhoods to be clean and pretty and beautiful and as well as their own home, and so we're not about beautification. We want beautification. But the experiences that I have experienced with the code enforcement department have not led me to believe that that's what they want from me. And I would say that beginning in July of 2018, I was issued my first violation, and I came to the council meeting, not to talk, but to visit with the councilmen and find out how I can accomplish the violation that I was experiencing. And I was referred to Lane Morris, and so he referred me to the loan and grant department. And so I applied for, and I received a grant. And it took 11 months, about 10 months really, to go through the process of submitting to contractors to come in and bid and find out what is all necessary. On the 10th of June, I received, well, let's see, on the May 9th, I signed the papers for the loan. Everything was doing good. On the 10th of June, I received another violation from the code department. I says, "Why?" I said, "I'm already working on one. Why do I need another?" And they said, "They contacted the loan department, and they said the loan didn't cover the violation, the new violation." I said, "What happened to the last one?" And they said, "Well, because of the death of Jill Robinson, her files were all canceled." And so, I was left with one. On June 14th, I received a call from the contractor stating that they're going to come over on Saturday and start the work. And in the meantime, I had mentioned, because I read the letter, that the city had a right, or the code department had a right, to come onto my property and take anything that's not in compliance with that. And I mentioned that to the coordinator of the contracting thing, that I didn't feel it was right to do that. On Monday, after the contractor started working on Saturday, I got a call in the morning from Lane Morris, saying that he didn't approve of my opinion, saying that they don't have the right to do things. And I said, "Well, it was just my opinion, and it was a casual conversation. I didn't think it was going to go anywhere." But he says, "Well, I'm just going to show you what rights I have. I'm going to come over and tow your cars right now." And I says, "I've got a letter saying I've got a time of July 10th to comply." He says, "Well, if I can't do that, then I'm going to deny access to the contractor to come on your property." I says, "He's only got 45 days to do things, and the winter's coming on, and he's already torn apart my house with siding and just moisture wrap type of a thing." And so, he was denied access. And so, I guess the bottom line, I see my time is gone, but the bottom line is, I was in compliance with the hearing. They found out another car was parked in my driveway with an expired temporary permit for emissions and things, but he, Mr. Patenio, said that that was on my property, and I needed to get that resolved before he can approve me. And it wasn't even my car, so he didn't understand why it would be my responsibility. But in the meantime, the debris that the contractor left was my responsibility, although the contract said it wasn't. It was his. But in the meantime, I was given until September 3rd, and I was in compliance. I left messages with the people, and they haven't gotten back to me at this time. And my house is in disarray, and I say, "If that is their definition of leaving a house in beautiful condition, their definition is different than mine." But I apologize for taking more time, but I just felt like, well, my daughter felt like it, and I needed to explain to her just a little bit. But it's still in limbo. It hasn't been resolved, as you were mentioning last time, that, you know, you thought it might have been. And so, it's bad.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I didn't mention earlier, but I knew, but those two didn't apply to it. If you're here to speak to the SMI-7 2019 Ordinance 2001 on the subdivision of 3100 South, that's a separate public hearing. But we have Tom Brown.
Actually, I thought that was a sign-in sheet, so excuse me.
Oh, no, that's fine. You're not the first, and you won't be the last. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll bring you back here. Let's see. Do our city manager have any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any comments?
I do. I, I don't know, I put myself in a very, how to put this way, very deep in involvement with your case, Doyle Griffith. I just wanted to know. We have to hear both sides of the stories. In fact, I just sat down with Wayne Pyre and Lane Morris a few minutes ago. We truly want to help you out, so please don't come here and tell your story, and you've got to tell both sides of the stories. In fact, I took a push and droop a few minutes ago. To the point, I kept myself for two, three months now. I didn't say anything. But now I have to let you know that. The church involved, the city involved, it tried to help you out. I talked to your daughter. Two nights ago, about your case, she called me. She left a message. But again, we have to hear both sides of the stories. And again, we try to help you out. We're not isolating you. We're not single you out. Or we're not helping you out. That's not the case. That's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Just a quick comment on public transit. We would love to have it free, too, but we don't want to raise taxes to do that. The Salt Lake Free Fare Zone is funded by the Downtown Salt Lake Business Alliance, and they pay for that service. If they do not renew their payment every year, that free fare zone goes away. And Salt Lake City has actually talked about raising their citizens' taxes to pay for that free fare zone. It has to be paid for some way. We don't want to raise our taxes here in West Valley just to pay for a free fare zone. Your ticket or your pass that you get from your employment is paid for by your employer. It isn't free. Somebody pays for it, and most of the students, also their parking fees, pay for free fare zones and free tickets. I know if you go to the U of U, part of your registration is the cost of a bus pass. So it's there. There are ways of doing it, but we, as a city, have not adopted it because we have not wanted to raise taxes.
Probably ought to mention as well that, of course, public transit is already subsidized by local governments through, you know, the sales tax that's been at a dom for them. In general, some of you may wonder why we limit it to five minutes. I would just say, you know, we want to give people a chance to bring an issue up, but oftentimes, they are complex issues, and they need to be worked on and resolved, you know, with staff and everything, and we can't do that in this meeting. This is kind of a signal to us to make us aware, this one isn't one we've been aware of before, but we'll continue to have that limit just for reasonableness. Otherwise, tonight's pretty easy, but we've had it where there's been a full 30 minutes and 20 people wanting to speak, and all on the same issue, by the way. So we do have to have some order to that. With that then, we're going to move forward now. We'll go to item 7 on our agenda, our public hearing. We have, and sometimes I give information, it's for the record, okay? So, Application SMI-7-2019 filed by State West Valley City requesting final plat approval for the JMYL subdivision located at 1770 West, 4100 South. In conjunction with that, will be Ordinance 2001 to approve the amendment of that law. This particular piece of ground, which many of us affectionately, no longer accurately, refer to as the old Kmart property, was, recently, ground was broken for an apartment complex there. There was also, in conjunction with those apartments, a few number of townhomes that were going to be built. This proposal is to separate those two pieces, the apartment building and the townhomes, into two separate pieces of property in conjunction with the request from the developer for his financing process. What was approved is still going to be built, both the apartment building and the townhomes, but it seems that this will make it easier for the developer to move forward on this on a more rapid path. That is simply all it does, is take that property and divide it in. The piece that was being used for the development will be now divided into two pieces. That is the issue before us. With that introduction, I will turn to the public. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing no takers, then we'll close the public input portion. We'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or motions.
Move for approval, Ordinance 2001.
Second. Properly force, any discussion or comments on that? Seeing none. Then, as outlined in state law, on our land transactions and contracts and all, we take a roll call vote. Our city recorder is in charge of that, so she will now do that roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigilow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to item 8. We have several items under there. These are various resolutions. The first one, Resolution 2004, is to award a contract to PRT builders for the construction of the Grand Vista's Park Project. This is a park that is on our list. We have a number of them, by the way, that are not yet developed. We develop those as we can. And this particular one is on two and three-quarters acres. And let's see, what else about it? We're going to complete the park, including playground, pavilion, picnic tables, benches, basketball court, walking path, exercise equipment, stormwater recycling system, trees, shrubs, drinking fountain, and an open grass area. That's quite the list. But it doesn't come free. The cost on that will be $933,651. This comes from park impact fees. As developments are built, fees are collected from each developer for the project that is being put in there. Those fees are accumulated and can only be used for the purpose of construction of new parks. And so, that's where the funds will come from. That is the introduction to the project. With that then, to the council. No public hearing here.
Move for approval of Resolution 2004.
Second. Properly force, any further comments? If not, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Vigilow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we go to Resolution 2005. We will actually, these two are related, if you'll note, on our agenda, 05 and 06. One is the source of funds, the other is the purchase of the equipment. This is a normal process for us. This particular agreement is for a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with US Bancorp. And this lease will be for the purpose of making funds available for, or making funds available for the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment to it. Let's see. Bank lease agreement, 10-year, 2.646% interest. We own the equipment at the end of the lease, and we have worked with US Bancorp, government leasing and financing a number of times before. And so, the lease is for $897,732. With that in production then, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 2005.
Second. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigilow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And now, if any of you think we're moving too rapidly and not asking enough questions, you understand that our method of working is that we have a study meeting that we hold earlier before this, and the one held last week is where we asked our questions, reviewed everything, but we wait to do this, give us a week to ponder it, to officially take action on it, which is what we're doing now. So, just in case anyone was wondering, but if you've heard that before, that's okay, too. Next is Resolution 2006. Now, this is for the purchase of the fire engine and related equipment for it. This is a ladder truck, and let's see. Just looking here, oh, 75-foot Pierce Ladder Truck. There it is.
78.
How's that?
78 feet.
78 feet. Oh, that's right. It's replacing a 75-foot one. They got just a little taller. It's replacing one that has 148,000 miles on it, and it no longer passes the annual ladder inspection. So we're going to put that into reserve and then use this new one. And the source of funding for that, of course, is the lease agreement. Thank you for helping me with that. With that then, introduction to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 2006.
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Vigilow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2007. This is a request to approve the purchase of four Ferno INX stretchers and related accessories from the Ferno Washington Inc. Company. In conjunction with our fire department, we respond to many medical calls. We will be purchasing four stretchers, and these are not, you're simple, two people grab them on each end. These are provided with all sorts of accessories there, including IV pole, equipment hooks, and they also are more stable for those who are on them. They lift up and down, and not by hand, per se. You know, you don't have to pick them up and carry them. They have wheels. These are more stable and are replacing the old ones that we have. These will be battery-powered, and, trying to think if there's anything else. By virtue of utilizing these, our personnel do not have to lift people. Now, if it's a child that's, you know, six years old, it's not a real problem if you're on a light stretcher, but we deal with adults. We deal with people who may be fairly large, and we don't ever want to have someone injured because we weren't able to safely lift them. These provide that safety, surety, powered lifting and moving into the ambulance. This will be a total for the four of them, $124,778. That is the issue before us, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 2007.
Properly force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigilow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, item 9 on our agenda is Application S-7-2019 filed by Legacy Properties, final plat approval for the Technology Drive Commercial Subdivision located at 3540 West Technology Drive, Technology Park Drive. This is a piece of ground where a business is located. They've had a portion of that property just on the south end of it. It's been overflow parking that has never been used. They've decided to separate those into two parcels, and I'm just getting back to, and again, to get the right spot, just so I can throw in here a little bit on the size of that. 3.9 acres. They'll divide, that's lot 1. Lot 2 will consist of 1.2 acres, and there's plenty of frontage road, plenty of access to streets, and they will have public utilities, months, those are in place, I believe, and then cross-access between the two pieces of property. That's the issue before us, to divide that property to the council.
Move for approval of Application S-7-2019.
Properly force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Vigolo?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have Application SMI-8-2019 filed by Tom Brown requesting final plat approval for the West Valley City Industrial Park Subdivision at 7305 West, 5400 South. This particular piece of property is also being divided into two parcels. This is in an area zoned for commercial, or excuse me, manufacturing, right? And the property, the way it sits, will need to have a street built into that, that's going to happen, so that access will be maintained on public streets for both pieces of property. They will basically just be divided in a north-south line there. And then, with that, just to give you a little bit of information on the size of that property, is that lot one will be 22 acres. And I don't, just, I'm trying to see there the, I don't see the size of the other piece of property.
.33 acres.
33 acres.
.33.
23. So, there are a point.
.23.
.23. Oh, yeah, I was thinking that was a bigger piece, but that's right. This was the little one, the little piece that they separated out, there at the northeast corner, wasn't it? Yeah.
Northwest.
Earthquake.
It's .33, 33, not 23.
.33.
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing, but you're good, yeah.
Okay.
Things are fine, as far as the description.
Okay. And, well, I better quit while I'm behind, I'll let the council take it from there. So, to the council.
I move for approval of Application SMI-8-2019.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Any further clarifications? Any additional information? Then, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigolo?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our regular agenda. We do not have a need for a closed session tonight. And unless there's any final comments from the council, thank you all for coming tonight, and have a good evening, and, motion adjourned. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it passes unanimously, we're adjourned. Thank you, Tom. I know you're still investigating, but I, my daughter's, my daughter's gonna call you tonight, and see what, what happened. Hi, how are you?